We've got attachment five.
Or attachment five.
Let's, let's meet in the morning and talk about it. I'll, I'll make you out there.
Send it out.
Okay.
Did you look at your calendar?
I did not today.
Just, just, just like a half inch.
I know, I, I got you.
Just, just not even, you don't even do any fringe or anything.
It's just some of it, just some of it.
Just, I just take it.
You change clothes to match your mask? See, another color coordinated.
That's why you are, because she is.
Good evening, we're going to call a meeting to order. Dr. Walker, you're to our council meeting tonight. I would ask, please, if you have cellphones, to please turn them off at this time. I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of you who have your masks on. We appreciate that so very much. At this time, we're standing to have pleasure of allegiance by Councilmember Hodges and prayer by Councilmember Reed.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would like to pray, would you please remain standing? Dear God, I pray that we seek your advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act based upon your wisdom. Please guide us. We place this meeting in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds also in your hands, that you may direct us. Amen?
All our councilmembers are present tonight, except Councilmember Blatton. He's under the weather. Approve a minute of our previous meeting, a work session on May twenty ninth, two thousand twenty, our regular meeting of June ninth, June eighth, two thousand twenty, a call meeting of June nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and a call meeting of June twenty sixth, two thousand twenty. If you've had, had a chance to read those minutes, would like to get a motion to approve those minutes. There's nothing to be added or deleted.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I dare to more discuss you. All in favor, it's your hands. Post is non-devote unanimously. Are there anything to be added to our agenda for tonight? There's nothing on our consistent agenda. The first thing on our agenda tonight is the zoning hearing, public hearing, text amendment, Joseph Smith text amendment to allow residential lofts at the ground level in the downtown commercial zoning District C one. Bryce.
Thank you, sir. Members of the mayor and council, this is a text amendment. It was approved on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty for recommendation to the mayor and council. The language attached is the language the planning commission did recommend. I will point out that we have received no public comment on this. Before the meeting, the planning commission meeting, after the planning commission meeting, the only public, the comment we've received is from the applicant thus far. The First Amendment is to the definition. Briefly, this is a clarification about the upper floors. The applicant is seeking to allow lofts at multiple levels, not just the upper level and lower, and the basement area. So they changed this, specifically, the area in blue is changed. And that basically handles that aspect of it. That part's relatively straightforward. They did suggest, and have a request, and the planning commission agreed with this as a recommendation, of a creation of Note eleven to the land, or to the area table on seven hundred point two, Table twelve. Note eleven, if approved by the mayor and council, would allow the following. The first thing would be, it would allow, it would require that any use of the building in a downtown area remain at least majority non-residential, because the loft is considered the accessory use. That's A. B, the non-residential occupancy, which is the area that's not set aside for residency, for residential use, would be at least sixteen square feet to ensure that any commercial component is sufficient to be viable. Obviously, they can go more than that, but that is just a ground minimum. The next one, C, indicates that the access to this unit will not be on the primary facade. So it's either going to be a secondary entrance, like you see downtown, just that one small door, or it's going to be on the rear on a secondary street, like on First Street, for example, where you have the front on Main. So, that's the intent there. The last one is a bit lengthy, and I'll kind of break this down here for you. It provides that all requirements of the section are met above, that we just touched on. They may have a limited number of smaller units. Currently, any one-bedroom residential attached unit or loft must be at least seven hundred and fifteen square feet. They're asking to allow a certain degree of flexibility if certain conditions are met, five hundred, seven hundred and fourteen square feet. They suggested the term micro-lofts be put in there. These would be limited to one-fourth of the gross square footage of the floor they're on, so they couldn't take up the whole building, obviously, so that limits their number and amount in the building. It also would require that for every single one of those units, they'd have to have at least one parking space on the property or in an immediately adjacent property, to ensure that we don't have a situation of too much stuff getting wedged into a small space. So, that's basically the meat of the request. This language was suggested by the applicant, and the planning commission agreed to recommend it to you. And Mr. Smith has informed me he will be participating in this meeting remotely, so we'll be hearing from him, and he is representing the applicant and the property owner. So, with that, I believe it's my part. Thank you, Bryce.
So, can I ask those questions? So, can you take us through? So, if we're looking at sixteen thousand square, let's do eight thousand square foot building.
Sure.
Four, four, four hun, four thousand square feet on the top floor, four thousand square feet
Sure.
on the bottom floor. So, the top floor is going to be completely residential?
That would preclude them from having any residential on the lower level.
So if you have all residential on the top level,
Top.
you cannot have any on the
Bingo.
Okay, so that's my question.
Yes.
So this is only going to apply to one-story buildings without, or
This
if you have a two-story building and you've got professional on the second floor? So, so tell me, tell me some of the mixed, mixed uses that we can, that, not the worst-case scenario, but the maximized
Possible applications.
Yes, yes, okay.
Sure. A couple of those would be, keep in mind, we have some, basically, some essentially three-story buildings, in the sense that the lower level, the basement area, is actually usable space. So when they develop a building, they can potentially use that for their calculations.
We have three, three-story buildings?
We have a few of those.
Okay.
So, so we have some of those, so that could be in play if someone came, wanted to develop those. But again, that fifty-one percent rule would apply for the whole building.
Including the basement?
Including the basement. If they're not using the basement, if they're just leaving it as unused space, then we just have the two floors. For a one-floor story building, you know, we'll say it was four thousand square feet, just to go with your example of the four and four.
So the one-story building?
Would potentially
Give me that example.
They could potentially have, if they met these other criteria, they could have the rear half of the building, typically the rear half.
And the, the minimum density, or the minimum square footage on a one-story building has to be sixteen hundred square feet for retail, is that right?
For the non-residential.
For non-residential, okay.
I wouldn't say retail, you could have an attorney's office.
Yeah, 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 okay.
We're just being very clear.
Yeah, commercial.
Yeah, non-residential. So, correct. But, again, they'd have to have that, and, you know, in certain circumstances, and, yeah. So it's pretty straightforward in that sense. It's just to ensure that we don't see a, it doesn't become purely residential.
It sounds like y'all really thought this thing out.
I assure you, Monica, Mr. Smith, and I and the planning commission put a lot of conversations into this. And this is, I'm going to assume about the fifth iteration. I spared you guys seeing the third or fourth iterations prior to this, as I figure they muddy the water.
So Bryce, if I could ask you, so the, the numbers you're using here are thirty-two hundred square feet
Sure.
for the ground floor.
Yeah.
Front, front eight hundred square feet, or sixteen hundred square feet of that has to be commercial.
Yes, sir.
Is thirty-two hundred square feet, is that about the average-sized building we have in the commercial district?
Part of the challenge is, some of those buildings are, while technically separate buildings are under the same ownership, which makes it a little fuzzy. I didn't do a size analysis, because we do have a number of buildings that could qualify for this purpose, and part of this reflects the applicant's request, so staff was trying to avoid putting our fingers too heavily on this one. So if this limits a certain number of buildings, this isn't particularly, we weren't looking to make this an immediate broad and figure out how to apply to every property. We're coming up with the base rules, basically.
The, one question I added was on a specific building, that's the old funeral home. Joe perhaps could answer this better, but I'll ask either one of you. The front half on the facade half, that would be, have to be commercial, I assume that's a reference to the, the facade facing Washington, and the much longer side elevation, which goes down Hancock.
Burnett Street, Burnett Street would be the access for that property, and that's how the
But that, that could be residential all halfway back.
Potentially. If, if this was passed, I believe the square footage would allow that in some capacity.
They wouldn't consider the Hancock Street elevation as frontage?
Well, we would consider that more likely than not as primary. More importantly, since they have Burnett Street as access, that parking lot back there and everything else, that would likely be the
What is that, that little alley back there?
Correct. And also, you'll note, it's the emphasis on the facade, so if for some reason you have no other way but to have a little side door, you've seen like, here on Main Street, you see a couple where they have just one door, and like, the rest is storefront, and if you didn't know that door led upstairs, it would just look like it's an odd door sticking there. So they have that small degree of flexibility, but the intent is to ensure that you don't have, you know, funerary apartments, for lack of a better word. You know, the funerary apartments sitting there as the main use and the main frontage. So it would be whatever non-residential space, be it a restaurant, bookstore, law office, whatever it may be.
When I, when I see on your report that the, the request for this zoning change does not appear inconsistent with the current zoning ordinance, as I read the description of downtown commercial, it may not be inconsistent, but I don't find it to be compatible either, to be honest with you. It's something, you've got things like, "to recognize and protect the historic and current vital core of the city to foster its continued existence as a commercial center for business, government, and service enterprises." I'm not saying I don't like this plan, but I also don't, personally don't think under our standards that it, I can't see this proposal taking away half of the commercial in favor of residential as being consistent with, with that. That's my personal feeling.
That's observations, yes. I would point out that the conference and plan also indicates this area is a mixed-use area. So, that is a factor to consider as well.
And the last question I had, if I could, Mr. Mayor, are we quite sure that the reduction in unit size, which at one time, I think, was eight hundred square feet minimum for apartments, was at some point relatively recently dropped to seven hundred and fifteen, where it currently stands, and this would reduce it to five hundred? Are we sure that this change under eight fifty point four, Section two, is applicable only to the downtown commercial district?
Yes, sir. Ken, if I may, if you put the slides real quick, I'll flip to the one in reference here. Specifically, thank you, Ken. Note, in the downtown commercial district, so you have to actually meet that first part of the note before you can get that smaller
That's under that chart?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So specifically, if they want to go that route, it's specifically only the downtown, C one, commercial district. So, I mean, yes, sir.
Because, Mr. Mayor, whenever we have these zoning questions, I always, I mean, caution is the key word for me, because
Yes, sir.
I'm always afraid of unintended consequences that I, people smarter than me might have thought of, but not me. So I'm looking for what, what is out there. I just want to make darn sure that this is not going to open the door to smaller units in other zoning sections, whether it's, you know, a
That is why the two criteria, so you could not fully develop it. I believe Mr. Smith can explain some of the logic better than I can, as he's the applicant for their intent on that, and I'll let him speak to that matter, since that's, this is his application on that front. Staff did, was the one, the folks who suggested the parking to ensure that it was an additional requirement to make sure it fits the area better. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we seeing a trend to smaller square footage retail? Because what we've seen going through the coronavirus and everything else, and the way people are shopping today, Eric, I think, I think what we're going to see Can you hear me? I, I think we're going to see a trend towards, towards smaller storefronts. And so, to me, that would be a good live-work, somebody put in a boutique store in the front and live in the back.
Well, I, I know that there's a trend for downtown living, and what I see with older populations is they can't, a lot of these older buildings do not have elevators, so it, it, it hurts a certain population to be able to live and enjoy downtown, maybe if they don't have a car. And this kind of opens the door for, for people to move in that maybe not have a car or want a car.
It's a good guess, though, but evidently it's not me.
Do we, do we need to turn the micro, microphone off? Okay. But, you know, as people, maybe there's a trend to not be so reliant on cars, and when people can walk and work and do everything within a certain, certain areas, it's awfully nice.
So it's, it's just limited to down, the downtown area?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you tend to see more of this happening downtown, as our stores become empty downtown? Or commercial stores become empty downtown? Do you tend to see more of this going on? Yes, sure.
Once y'all get to the question and answer of the discussion section, we can add additional information on trends, but the applicant really needs to present their, their current standing on the amendment.
Thank you. Is there no, no more question for Bryce? Thank you, Bryce. This time our public hearing is over.
No, sir. Mr. Smith is available through online.
Is everybody's computer muted? Mine is not on.
Sounds like a heartbeat, like I'm listening to, like ultrasound. Oh, my gosh, so weird. It's an echocardiogram.
It can? Yeah, yeah. You try muting Carl. Somebody called into the meeting with an unmuted phone open line, and I think that's causing feedback. Caller four. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paramon and City Councilmembers, for hearing this application. I just wanted to give a little background as to sort of what the genesis of the idea that you're seeing is. And it's really related to the dwindling of retail spaces on ground-level storefronts in downtown Madison. And in talking to building owners, I think there's a compelling reason to think that existing commercial spaces in some buildings in downtown Madison are actually oversized for both the uses in them and also the rents that are being asked for spaces which are larger than they need to be in order to accomplish a commercial function. And so, in looking at those possibilities for increasing mixed uses within these buildings downtown, it seems like there's an opportunity to both preserve distinct commercial spaces, but sort of right-size those spaces, so that a tenant potentially has a more modest rent, which would potentially enhance the ability of retail to maintain storefront spaces, while at the same time giving building owners a return on parts of the spaces which are being underutilized right now. In order to sort of make this come to pass, or figure out a way to have this come to pass, it was important to figure out a way that didn't preference that second use, that residential use, over the commercial space in the front. And, and what we came up with was these limitations, or these restrictions, is essentially, say, fifty-one percent of the entire building area needs to be preserved for non-commercial use, or sorry, excuse me, for, for the commercial use, non-residential use. And that the sixteen hundred square foot space has to be preserved for that non-residential use. Eric and Chris, to sort of address your question about approximate sizes, if you look at, just as an example, the antique suite space in the basin building is about seventeen hundred square feet. So sixteen hundred square feet is roughly that size, it's a twenty-five-foot storefront that goes back, actually, I'm not sure, seventy-five feet or so. So, that seems like a, a, a good module for, for viable commercial use, while allowing the building, parts of, other parts of the building on the street level to be used, used differently. It's not really about a, trying to figure out how to fill half of the building with something that's non-residential. It's really about identifying and preserving those commercial spaces at the front, and then figuring out a way, if there is excess space, can that space be used for something else? Also, not, not reduce the visibility of the commercial space on the front, in the, at the street, by making it their entrances on the secondary or the rear facade of the building. So entrance has to be entirely from those secondary or tertiary facades. And then, also, the, 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 the limited, the, setting the module for the commercial unit size, let's see, what was the other thing? Oh, and then the, the limit on the overall square footage. So the building, to clarify what Bryce, Chris is your question about, in a two-story building, or potentially a three-story building, or two-story building with basement, if you look at the overall square footage, there is, there are possibilities for having residential fully on a second floor, and also some residential on the ground floor, so long as that, that, that threshold of fifty-one percent is not exceeded within the building. And buildings that have basements that are usable for other spaces, you can, you can have commercial uses or professional uses on those basement levels as well. It's really all about preserving the ratio of residential to non-residential, so that the non-residential use is always the primary use in the building, which is sort of critically important in that C one downtown district. The smaller unit size, to just address that question, in, in, in many of these two-story commercial buildings in downtown, they're legacy office suites. You know, these are what's called the office and, and retail building type, where you have commercial space on the ground floor, and you have office suites up above. There are a lot of these, these second-floor spaces that are configured, historically configured, with some smaller-sized spaces. In order to, to, to alter those spaces, or to modify them to make them residential units, it's really nice to be able to use the existing suite configuration. But some of those suites don't meet that size requirement under the current zoning. And so what we're really trying to do is not try to cram as many units in, it's really trying to make the best use of existing configurations of second floors as possible. And so, that, and, but also, again, not trying to sort of create a micro, a micro loft development on a second floor, we're limiting it to twenty-five percent, no more than twenty-five percent of the floor area that that, that unit, or where that unit or several units would be placed. So, the majority of the units on a floor would need to be complying as the code is certain, as the zoning ordinance is currently written, but a certain number of those units would be allowed to be smaller, and that helps to take advantage of those historic layouts. Can I answer any questions or clarify any points?
Yeah, Joe, you know, as you know, I've sat through many HPC meetings with, with Mr. Snyder, our applicant. I have nothing but total faith that he, I wish all of our applicants were as agreeable to the changes as Mr. Snyder is. So, I'm confident he has an appreciation for preservation, and you have served on that commission for a couple of decades, I believe. So let me just ask you, what I was referring to earlier, are you, Joe, comfortable, and I respect your opinion very much in, in preservation field, are you comfortable that we're not undermining our historic protection of the character of the downtown with this proposal?
Certainly. I think if you look at, I, I mean, that was sort of one of the reasons that we drafted the, the fact that the commercial space has to occupy the full front of, of the, of this, any ground floor in question, where you might have residential units at the back. We're not trying to, the, the idea is to prevent units from sneaking or snorkeling back to the front, because it, so that all the service and all the degress can be met, needs to be met from the back of the building. We're also, the sixteen hundred square foot module that is, has to be retained for the commercial space is of a, it's not a, a small space, it's a good-sized viable commercial space. Not every building in downtown Madison can meet that. Because it, it, you know, you could ostensibly think of a, of a, of a way where somebody could have twenty feet of the front of a building as commercial space, and then do all the back as residential, and that's not a, that's not a proper outcome, that's not an ideal outcome. So, by defining both that limited percentage of, of, of non-commercial use, and also the, the, creating a sort of, a, a, the module which, which requires a, a consistent-sized commercial space to be maintained, I think that the, in fact, you'll see no change to the front of commercial storefront spaces, and in fact, we hope that it encourages continued or enhanced retail use of those spaces. Whereas right now, I mean, I lament the fact that there's so much change of, 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 well, we're formerly and historically retail spaces into professional offices on the ground floor. I think that that's inappropriate for, for downtown Madison, because those should be, in my mind, those should be retail I think that that's inappropriate for for downtown Madison because those should be, in my mind, those should be retail spaces. And anything that we can do to facilitate maintaining or making those commercial spaces more readily accessible, readily affordable for small businesses, I think is a win for Madison. Um, and I think it has, this in fact, at least from the street, the front uh facade has no impact on the historic integrity of any of the buildings in question. And in fact, the backs of the buildings, you're going to see improvements in the backs of the buildings, um upgrades, enhancements because of the additional use of the the enhanced use at the back. So I think you'll see um improvements that otherwise wouldn't be being done, there wouldn't be the motivation to do it. Um, and also some in additional parking um i- in some locations as well.
Well, this could take some burden off of, if you think about maintaining historic integrity, it takes the burden off the property owner. Especially when they're empty storefronts, this will alleviate some of the burden to make their rental units more affordable and maybe generate more income so that there is a uh ability to to keep these historic historic properties intact.
And I do think the the compromise or the the arrangement that these applicants and the planning department have worked out is, I think it is quite protective of the commercial facades and I think you've done a good job of kind of finding balance.
This is a text amendment, just like the, so this will affect all the properties in the in the downtown district, just not Mr. Snyder's, is that right? So I just wanted to be clear about that because you had mentioned Mr. Snyder. So we've got to keep in, keep in mind that that there are other people that will um hopefully be as mindful about historic preservation, which I think there will be, yeah.
That's exactly right and that's the concern, we can't always have good applicants and we never know what's coming up. That's part of that unforeseen consequences.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, but there are no more questions for Mr. Smith? Is there anyone else here to speak for this text amendment for Mr. Smith? If not, is there anyone here against?
I'm having trouble hearing, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure, is there anyone else would like to speak for this text amendment? Anyone here would like to speak against the text amendment?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Can you hear us?
I, it's, 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 it's getting garbled.
The question, the first question were, is there anyone out there that would like to speak for this text amendment in favor of? If not, is there anyone out there that that would like to speak against this text amendment? If not, this public hearing is closed, it comes back to our council members for a vote. Uh, public hearing, text amendment from Joseph Smith, text amendment to allow residential lofts at the ground level in the downtown commercial zone in District C one. Is there no more comments from the council, we take a vote on this?
Yeah, it's a long motion, so.
Uh, there we go. Thank you, Ken.
Can I ask a quick question about parking? The the more um in in downtown residential on the second floor, ground floor, wherever you can accommodate, it's good. But we're starting to get more challenges with parking and and um conflicts with the downtown parking ordinance. I know you addressed it by saying it has to be adjacent to or how, how are we going to affect that, how are we going to get that done in a in an ongoing basis? Because once, once a ground floor, any downtown building is converted to apartments, then we're going to be dealing with that from from now on. So how is that, how is that documented?
Uh, yes, sir. At the time, uh, at the time of plan review, we would ensure that that aspect of the zoning is met. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to get their permit for that particular design. And since it has to be on property, we don't have to worry about its impact on our public property, uh, public parking the city provides. So that is a factor that could prohibit some properties that are basically at the lot line and don't, and all their neighbors are. It could prevent them from having the micro lofts. So that would be a limitation. Uh, not all properties could do that.
Do we, do we allow those apartments or any apartments who don't have designated parking to designate public parking as their parking spaces? Even untimed public?
Okay. All right.
Yeah. I'll squat. Um, I just wanted to clarify for the manager, just to be clear. The council opened the zoning ordinance for parking proximity up to anything in the downtown district for regular residential. So any other loft, other than a micro loft, has to provide parking within the downtown area. And it's documented at the time of the building permit. We have four scenarios, well, two buildings but four different apartments that you might be thinking of right now, that were having challenges with parking because they were not permitted by the city, they were permitted prior to us taking over residential permitting. And so we've got four apartments that we are not sure about where their residential parking is, but that would not happen with us going forward. The parking that you're reviewing tonight only includes the micro units. And we added that as an extra provision, as Bryce said, because a couple of extra little lofts, um, of course, Mr. Snyder's not proposing it just to squinch them in, but we might have other people who might try to do that. And since we already have in parking challenges and our ordinance is as flexible as it can be without saying, you don't have to provide parking at all. We felt like with the micro units, it was imperative that we say it has to be on-site or touching the site. But again, that's limited to twenty-five percent of loft units.
Well, it was mea- it was mentioned that um people want to live, you know, downtown, they want to be in proximity to their nice restaurants and shopping and downtown areas very nice, but they also want to be able to touch their car.
Yeah.
So, you know, they want to see their car, they want to be able to walk straight out their door to their car. So I I appreciate the planning department and any proposal to be very thoughtful of where their car is going to be located.
No.
Not yet, no, not yet.
I think we're trying to do it, get it on the screen so we can read it.
All right. David, does the, does your questions also refer to trash and those those alleys behind on the rear elevations are kind of narrow and I'm not, I mean, is it feasible that everybody can have their own trash can?
No, no, we, 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 we have, for years have been dealing with, um, not dealing is the wrong way, that has a negative connotation, but we've been assisting businesses who don't have rear doors, that we actually walk in and get their garbage. I mean, we, we do it whichever way we need to in downtown and that'll be true for residential as well. I mean, there are dumpster sites um within downtown that are easily accessible. Um, we only ask that they don't deposit their garbage in the, in the receptacles on the sidewalk, that gets to be unsightly. But um, we typically do okay with that, just being flexible with whichever way we need to do it.
Uh, just a staff suggested a simple way of phrasing this, uh, basically approval of the text, if you wish to make a motion to approve, you can use this language. Uh, approval of the text amendment to section two ten uh and section seven hundred point two, table twelve, note eleven, based on the application, public hearing discussion, and considering applicable standards to adopt the language as presented in this hearing. So you don't have to repeat everything, if that meets council's nod.
Pull up over for a motion. On this text amendment.
Sorry, Mayor, what did you say?
Motion, we're ready for a motion.
Can we not just move to approve the way it was read so we don't have to do that?
You can, yeah, sure, you can read it from there, yeah.
I move that we approve the amendment as read and presented up on the screen.
I'll second.
Are there any more discussion? All the favors show of hands? Poses, none to vote, you're not in the vote. Thank you, Bryce. We'll go right into our second uh text amendment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I could have you pause, but certainly I'm going to reactivate that phone if it'll be easier for folks to hear.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This time we go into our second public hearing, text amendment, Jeff Royer, text amendment to section eight zero zero point three three. F, changing the ground, changing the maximum number of guest rooms for a bed and breakfast from four to six. Bryce?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. The, as, this is a very shortened length text amendment proposed by Mr. Royal. Specifically, the only change is changing the number of bedrooms uh possibly allowed for a bed and breakfast uh from four to six. Briefly, staff would note a few things. One, uh, bed and breakfasts are an accessory use to a residential use, so there still must be a primary residential use on the property. Uh, and two, this is a text amendment regarding specifically the ordinance itself. Uh, Mr. Royal understands that for his property to change the number of bedrooms, he will have to go through the conditional use process again. So granting this does not necessarily grant Mr. Royal the ability to have six. That is something the board can discuss, the mayor and council can discuss at a later time if the mayor and council so choose to approve this amendment. Uh, very briefly, this was approved with a unanimous recommendation by the planning commission, as it is written, for adoption. That was the recommendation. Uh, there's been a fair amount of public comment. Uh, I will say that it has generally been concerned with the impact of the, uh, they believe it's a, a lot of the folks have written in, and I'm summarizing in general terms, uh, concern about the amount of the increase and some, a number of uh people have written in, raising concerns about whether or not this would be pushing something from purely residential or not. And again, just for a reminder, for the public's benefit, uh, Mr. Royal, while he is presenting this, uh, he is not going to be able to necessarily use this until he goes through the conditioning use process. Mentioned the planning commission vote. The only other thing I would say, in in the terms of impact, uh, currently we only have one actual residence using a bed and breakfast accessory use, which is Mr. Royal's property. Uh, we do have some other uses that some people conflate which are bed and breakfast ends, but those are a commercial use that are not allowed in residential areas. So they're a different animal. It's a terminology that gets the folks confused and even gets me tripped up once in a while. So that's a very straightforward way of discussing something that has generated a lot of discussion and I'm su- sure you folks have seen a lot of the public comment and I will let the public speak for itself on the matter.
Okay, are there any questions for Bryce before we go to our public hearing?
Bryce, can I, when the planning commission, I, I just remember in all my days working with this ordinance, do you know if they had a, an opportunity to really understand the bed and breakfast regulations and the zoning uh part about bed and breakfast? Because I don't, did they, I I didn't watch the meeting or read the minutes, but I just wanted to make sure they, they understood the totality of of the change in the text amendment in the zoning if if this passes.
Yes, ma'am. If I had to interpret why they made that decision, I think one of the factors that decided them was the fact in the zoning ordinance, and I'm going to pull it up here so I get this part right, because if I quote by memory, uh, for every additional guest room, you have to have an additional point one two five acres.
Yes.
So I think their, their, their viewpoint was the bigger you went, this pushed more and more properties out of the possibility of having five or six rooms.
Yeah, but that gives an undue advantage for somebody that has more property and and, I mean, and that's for us to talk about, yeah.
You're, you're putting staff on a, in a weird position.
I know, I know, I just realized that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, Bryce.
No worries.
Okay, is there a number of questions for Bryce? This public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here to speak for this text amendment? Jeff, Mr. Roy, if you would come, uh, I think that's the microphone, as you, if you would state your name, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, for hearing this application. As Bryce mentioned, uh, what I'm asking for is not for a change to what my bed and breakfast can do. I'm asking for a change in the language uh that guides decisions um on whether to grant conditional use permits for those who are applying for bed and breakfast licenses. When the original ordinance was drafted, uh, from what I understand, the number four was somewhat arbitrary number. Um, we have a couple of bedrooms in our bed and breakfast that are unused, that we'd like to expand and offer two additional themed rooms that could offer particularly two different uses. One is a room with more than one bed. Currently, we have four bedrooms on the second floor with one bed each. And also, we'd like to add a bedroom on the ground level that's more accessible to our older guests. Also, as Bryce mentioned, though, this isn't specifically for my B and B. I think that this would benefit all, uh, you know, potential future B and B owners in Madison who want to have flexibility with how uh they're running their bed and breakfast operations. There are some other large properties in town who could, you know, feasibly become bed and breakfast in the future um that this this flexibility would would allow them to potentially, you know, be more successful. I think the city benefits greatly from bed and breakfast existence in town. And uh, for instance, uh, GDEC did a tourism product, uh, resource team, uh, brought them into Madison to make recommendations, I believe, last year or the year before last. And one of their recommendations was to um remove the restriction on the number of bedrooms that of only being four and potentially allow, you know, six or eight. Um, you know, I think that six is a reasonable number. Also, as Bryce mentioned, you know, if a bed and breakfast were to increase from two to four rooms or from four to six in this scenario, they would require more parking space, they would require more acreage, they would require more square footage. So simply having more bedrooms doesn't necessarily uh cause a, you know, greater density uh of of guests on a property or uh, I don't believe a significant impact on the neighborhood. In addition, any bed and breakfast that would be applying for a license, it's permitted for council to take pretty much anything into consideration when uh making a decision of whether to approve that license. And that comes up for approval every year. So if uh neighbors were to find that a bed and breakfast was causing a burden on the neighborhood or they found it out of characteristic with a residential nature, they could certainly bring those concerns to mayor and council and mayor and council could deny the application any given year. Uh, and that applies to myself as well. So um, there are already a great, well-crafted set of restrictions and conditions and guidelines uh under which bed and breakfasts, like myself, are required to operate. And um, all of those will continue to remain in place to protect the residential nature of the the bed and breakfast in the neighborhoods in which they operate. So um, I heard a lot of the public comments and I've spoken with some of the people in town who are concerned and and I do believe that there was some misinformation out there uh when this was coming before planning commission and even since then. Uh, even in, you know, articles that I've seen in the newspaper um about, you know, what this is actually seeking to change. Uh, this would not remove uh the the primary residential nature of of a bed and breakfast. Uh, it would not be shifting towards a commercial use. There are still all the restrictions in place that keep a bed and breakfast from being a commercial operation. We can't have events, we can't serve anything but breakfast, we can't sell alcohol, we can't allow pets, uh, we have to live on the property more than half of the year, we have to own the residence. It's, it's, nothing is changing about about the way that bed and breakfasts are approved. It's simply a change in the maximum number of rooms that could be allowable. And um, even myself, I'm not certain that I'd want to go up to six rooms, but I think that it is an appropriate number. And um, and so I I recommend that you approve this change and thank you.
Mr. Roy, how long have you? Mr. Royal, how long have you been in business, though, with a bed and breakfast?
I believe we opened in twenty fifteen, so we've been open in about five years, twenty sixteen.
And has there been any complaints from the neighbors since you have been in business there?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Do you know, David, if there, if there have been any complaints, official complaints about?
I don't, I don't recall any complaints. I don't, no.
Do you have enough room for parking if you have all six of your rooms?
My understanding is if we applied to have up to six rooms, we would have enough parking at our property.
How has your business been thus far with the, with the four?
It's been slowly growing. We had our best year yet last year. Of course, I applied for this text amendment before the COVID nineteen crisis began. It's sort of put, you know, changed the optics on it a little bit. But I believe now, more important than ever, actually, that we, we have this text amendment change. And, you know, to give you a specific reason, we've seen that our interest in, in guest stays has gone more toward whole house rentals for groups, particularly families, who have been quarantining together as waiting to get away from their, their homes and spend some time together somewhere else. We are still closed, uh, to individual room night and, because we don't feel comfortable with separate guests living together uh, in, under one roof and being able to keep them safe and keep our people safe. But, so, what it's looking like over the next year is that we may have fewer bookings, but of all four rooms. And so that's gonna make the economies of scale of running a bed and breakfast even more challenging.
I know with, with weddings, the whole house, um, booking is important. I mean, I know when people travel as families, and I know that Madison being a wed- wedding venue, are you seeing more, uh, whole house bookings? I mean, and is that, does that, is that covered under the current ordinance? Or is that something we need to look at? Or what does that, what does that mean?
Well, when I say whole house, what I mean is all four rooms.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they don't rent the whole house.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, uh, parts of the house that we are private areas for us, and we don't allow.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's four rooms plus the common areas we allow the guests.
And I'm, I'm not saying that that's bad. I mean, I think those are, those are good. I mean, if we're a wedding destination wedding place, then we need to have something like that, so.
And, I mean, personally, I mean, I will say, wedding groups are not our most desired group. They tend to be a little more loud, a little more messy, and they stay up later, and they, you know, they're a little bit more high maintenance. But they're great, and they come to Madison a lot, so they're, you know, to some degree, they're bread and butter for us. But there are fewer weddings. I mean, overall, there are fewer requests, but the requests that we are getting are for whole house rentals.
That's right.
People don't wanna share the living space with other people in these towns.
Well, and people are traveling with Airbnb, and you're probably advertising on Airbnb.
No, we aren't.
Okay, I know that the Brady Inn does, um, and people are used to having more of that experience, yeah.
Yeah, and people that, that wanna rent a house on Airbnb, they expect to have sort of full reign over the house, and they don't expect there to be a person living in it with you. So we, we haven't been on Airbnb because I think that people will get the impression that they'll have the house to themselves. And as long as we're living in the house, we want them to sort of think of their rooms and their renting and just respect the other guests when they're in common areas.
So you're actually doing what you're supposed to do, I mean, with, with regards to the, the B and B ordinance as it is, is it's not really supposed to?
We're trying, yeah, yeah.
I would hope so.
Well, you can, you can advertise individual private rooms on Airbnb. Uh, and I think that's what Brady Inn does.
Yeah, and I mean, a lot of B and Bs do it, and other areas do it, so.
Yeah, um, no, it's, I think it's more the clientele that you get to with Airbnb that, um, you know, that we've kind of stayed away from it at this point.
Is mostly your guests retirees or just a mixture?
Well, we're getting younger and younger crowds. I think that Kirby House in particular has a unique offering, uh, our style and the, the, you know, we've, we've been attracting a younger clientele, um, and, you know, I think that's a great trend for Madison. Uh, we do have probably more folks in, you know, retiree age than we do younger folks, but we've seen an increasing number of young guests, uh, as we've, you know, promoted ourselves on Instagram and Facebook and targeted those audiences.
Thank you.
Jeff, a quick question. What about, um, we don't, we haven't had any lately, and to be honest, we've kind of enjoyed the break, but when the movies come to town, they look for everything and anything. Does your model change, or do you operate pretty much the same way when they're, they're looking for rooms?
We have to make a lot of accommodations for the movie folks when they come into town. Yeah, we, we do usually expand our services a little bit. Like, we, we've had to, like, provide laundry services to them at no cost. And, uh, usually, we end up bearing a little more cost, but they stay a longer period, so it kind of balances out. Again, we just gotta kind of go after any room nights we can get. And a lot of times, the movies are coming in town, like in midsummer, where we often get somewhat slow. So, um, we've been happy to have the movie folks, but we, you know, they, they come with trade-offs, of course.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, disclose at this time, uh, Mr. Royal was nice enough to donate fifty dollars to my campaign two and a half years ago. I just wanted to let you know that. Uh, there was one thing that Jeff said, uh, as far as the arbitrariness of the four rooms that we currently have in the ordinance. I don't believe that's exactly a fair rendition of, uh, of how that came about. I understand it's related to, uh, a formula that allows those rooms to be an accessory use and not the primary residential use. Perhaps we could ask, uh, the planning director to speak to that? Do you mind, Monica?
I think it was pretty thought out, wasn't it, at the time, yeah?
Um, I don't know where I'm supposed to stand when I do this, I'm gonna sit down. Okay, so, um, the only thing, uh, I would say is, no, sir, it wasn't, I, I don't think Jeff was being cavalier by calling it arbitrary, but, um, just to kind of give you the basis of where that number came from, um, the average house size in Madison is twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, we looked at, you know, a general layout of bedrooms and that kind of feel. So, um, the number of four bedrooms was based off of, you know, how do we keep the tail from wagging the dog? Both of your applications tonight are about what's the primary use and what's the accessory use. And so the square footage was based off of, if you had four bedrooms, and we, whatever the square footage we used at the time for that bedroom calculation, multiply it by four, would give you less than half of the square footage of the house. So the bigger the house, it's potentially, if you use that same formula, it could be more bedrooms. But at the time, we were looking at the average house, house in Madison being about twenty-five hundred square feet. So that's where the, that's where the formula came from. There, there's no magic to it. It was really just based on the square footage of the house, but it wasn't entirely arbitrary.
When was, um, and I was talking to David, when, do you, Monica, do you remember when the, this ordinance, was it in the eighties or the, I mean, what, when was it put into place? Cause it, I think it was contrary, it was contrary.
The ordinance is nineteen nineties.
No, no, the original B and B ordinance was in the middle eighties.
Okay.
It was, it was B, it was, uh, BM before me. So that's, that's a while, that's a, and I, it was before I got to work for the county, so that's thirty-four years. So in my memory, I think it was two bedrooms at the very beginning, is that right?
That's correct, cause I remember reading that the Irwins.
Two rooms, and Mr. Mayor shaking his head, he was here.
Do you remember if it was two rooms?
So the, the change to a four-bedroom was in late nineties, early two thousand, a little bit after that? It started off with two, then it went to four.
The fact remains that it was very carefully done, and it was a hot issue back in the day, but it's never been more than one or two B and Bs at any one time. It's not been, I know it's a serious issue about commercialization in a residential area, but it's never been, it's never, thankfully, been the problem that it maybe could be, I'm, I'm not sure.
No, sir, in my understanding, we've never had more than three that qualified under the B and B standard.
Usually, one of those is in name only, at least.
I apologize for getting the arbitrary nature wrong. I wasn't aware of that calculation. My understanding was that it was just kind of a number that was picked out of the, but that, that's clearly wrong, so.
Is there anyone else here to like speak for, uh, the text amendment, Mr. Royal? If not, is there anyone here to like to speak against or in opposition? If you would come forward and state your name, sir? And the address of which you live.
My name is, uh, Steve Whitcomb, and I live at, uh, eight oh five.
Is this the Whit- Whitcomb? Yes, hold that microphone close to your, now that folks get here.
My name is, uh, Steve Whitcomb, and I live at eight oh five Old Post Road here in Madison. I appreciate, uh, mayor and council members a chance to, uh, to talk to you. My wife Kathy and I are opposed to this, uh, text, text amendment for the expansion of the bed and breakfast. As, uh, everyone is aware, the term bed and breakfast is defined in the Madison zoning ordinance. And it's an owner occupied, single-family dwelling providing for lodging or lodging and breakfast of no more than four guest rooms for compensation, and it's operated by the, uh, domicile area resident. Under prescribed, uh, prescribed conditions, the primary use is for a residence as opposed to a business. I just wanna reemphasize, the primary use is for a residence as opposed to a business use. The application request rezoning that would bump up the bed and bed occupancy initially from four bedrooms to six of the seven bedrooms that I'm aware of, maybe more, in the house. This, uh, approval would constitute an inappropriate expansion in the commercial activity as an inn or even a motel in the residential area of the city, including the Madison Historic District. I assume when the ordinance was originally approved, the allowance for B and Bs at all was intended only for an accessory use as discussed previously. And where the primary use remained residential, subject to very limited conditions in order to protect the single-family neighborhoods as residential character of the city from undue, uh, commercial expansion. I'm not gonna recite point by point challenges in the existing ordinance, cause I'm confident that the, the mayor and council has all read and understand that there are, are several conflicts. However, Kathy and I settled in our home because it's in the residential neighborhood. And a bonus was in, in the historic neighborhood of Madison with what we thought were sufficient ordinance safeguards to protect us and the quality of that residential neighborhood. We didn't settle with the expectation that a quaint bed and breakfast, as a Kirby House is, would ultimately turn into a house for rent by the day with the associated turnover of strangers, potential noise, potential parking, and increased traffic on the already dangerously congested Old Post Road. Running out eighty-five percent of the, uh, bedrooms can't in any logical sense be considered a secondary use and can't be consistent with protecting an established, single-family zoning district. Can the Madison City Council amend ordinances? Of course you can, you all are the Madison City Council. The question is, should you amend zoning ordinances to favor a single business and exclude the rights of numerous residents in the residential area affected by the change? It assumed their rights would be protected. I think reviewing to answer what purpose and why you would amend this ordinance, expansion to the detriment of a neighborhood or the potential detriment is important. And draft at the point of the ordinance limiting the number of rooms that could be rented was to protect the other residents in residential areas of the city from homes, both large and small, from being turned into B and Bs, inns, hotels, and motel. And I would just ask, what has changed? My wife and I are vehemently opposed to this action, and we ask the council to consider the implications and veto the text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of this text amendment change? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Do we have, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, or do we have people perhaps watching either through go to meetings or the call-in number we gave that might wanna take a minute to, uh, make a comment? I know at least one person who was attempting to call in. Is, is our phone activated and all that stuff?
Is there anyone?
I just read a, I just got a chat from Annie Hunter saying she's up there with the last speaker. Some are going to request it. If they can unmute their microphone right now and.
Wait them a minute, cause they wanna call, second after they wanna call in. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I do see Miss Cole, Bonnie Hall, her microphone active, I don't know if you want to.
It's, it's been active for several minutes.
This public hearing is closed. Back to our council for a vote. Final comments?
Mr. Mayor, um, it, it, it's nice that we're able to talk, talk about this right now and not make it about, um, the Kirby House. Uh, you know, I, I'm pretty familiar with this ordinance, just being in real estate for twenty-five years and have seen people come and go and, and, uh, what they've wanted to do with their property. My worry here is, and, and, and Mr. Royal runs, I mean, the Kirby House is well-renowned, and I was part of the, um, the Tourism Development Committee that came through, and I ac- actually asked them to look at our B and B ordinance, and I nev- we never heard back from them. And I really wanted them to delve into it because I'm not sure how many properties would actually benefit from this. If we raised to six because of the square foot, the, the area that is required, you would have to have, what, a one point three, four acre lot with, if you had six rooms, right? Is that correct, Bryce? Do you, do you, have you done the math?
Yes, and I'll redouble check that if you would proceed.
So the ordinance only allows for four, four bed and breakfast, and they have to be two thousand feet apart. And is that, as the crow flies, do you know, David, how does that, how does?
It's from the edge of the property lines. We've, puts it approximately at the cultural center from Kirby House.
Yeah, so, when you look at those restrictions and then you add this, it will, and it will nearly cut out any smaller, um, bed and breakfast opportunity. If you look at all the, the big properties that would benefit, and I'm not sure how many there are, but I know that there are a few. And if you have them two thousand feet apart, then the people in the middle that may wanna benefit this, the true mom and pop cottage industries that may wanna rent, you know, have that ex, you know, that true experience of a New England bed and breakfast or, or, then they would not be able to do it because of the two thousand feet restriction. If you look at the bigger properties that actually could do this. So that is my concern, is that it, that it changes the intent of what a true bed and breakfast is, that I think you guys discussed in the eighties. You looked at the New England model where, you know, grandma, grandpa, they have two or three rooms, and they come in and serve you a breakfast, and it's a cottage industry instead of an actual commercial intrusion into it, regardless of the historic district in any, in, any neighborhood. I think it's, I think it's, uh, a privilege, not necessarily a, a right. And I'm not a fan of the two thousand foot lim- limit. I think that is way too onerous. Um, and I think we really, this is a discussion where we really need to look at our B and B ordinance to make sure that, that we're, that there are people that really wanna take, that wanna, that wanna use this, uh, ability. They're not able to because they're too close to, um, I mean, right now, there's only one, and I think a lot of it is because of the, of the distance requirement.
How, uh, how many residents have you heard speak of having a bed and breakfast besides, besides the Kirby House?
The conversation I hear mostly from people, and this is a whole nother conversation, is, is Airbnb, uh, short-term rentals. But, I mean, and that is, that is the way people are traveling. Savannah's doing it, Charleston's doing it. But that's a whole nother conversation, it's not for this meeting, but for right now, that, I mean, that's what I hear mostly. But there are people that would love to be able to do one or two rooms, like, kinda like the bourgeois's cottage, they had one. And what I worry about is the bigger properties being able to capitalize on this and squeezing out the, um, the smaller guys that, that may wanna do it. And I might be over-concerned, but there, there's a little bit of that.
We've also, in the past, felt that some would hold a license and do nothing just to keep others from being able to do it. We've cautioned because we had no activity. So we didn't know. So we didn't know how often someone was trying to game the system by effectively holding a license and never using it to keep anybody from two thousand feet away. So it's self-limiting, but whether it has two or six, it doesn't matter, the two thousand's still the same. Did I hear you correct?
It's two thousand, right? Isn't it two thousand feet?
Two thousand feet.
Yeah. And you can only have four. So if you think about the bigger properties, if you really think about the bigger properties that can hold this, and they're on the boundaries, kind of, there's North Main, I mean, you have to have, you have to have the acreage requirement.
It's only going to make a couple of hundred feet difference. It's not, the bigger property fact is just, unless I'm hearing you wrong or misunderstanding what you're saying, I don't know that that's the bigger issue than the two thousand foot, which simply says you won't have three on one street and people have to deal with it, you know, all in one neighborhood.
So if you look at the, if you're looking at the Kirby House, then the cultural center, but then everything behind the Kirby House can't have it either. So, I mean, and that's, I have more problems with, I have a lot of problems with the distance, but also I think if we did grant, I mean, if it went into effect right now and six rooms were be able to rent, then it would hurt the properties between, if you had a larger property, say, a North Main, and then properties between North Main and South Main would not be able to benefit. Does that, am I making sense? Like, the smaller Pine, Plum, and Palm would totally be cut out. And for years, there was a great bed and breakfast on Pine Street that would not be able to do it, so.
So have there ever been any other bed and breakfasts on South Main or Old Post Road?
Yeah, I mean, so forever, let's see, Pine Street had one, North Main had one, Ron and Rhonda had one on Porter Street.
North Second Street, I think, may have been an inn. I'm not certain about that. B and B inn.
And then Leonard Wallace had his on Old Post, so, I mean, you know, I think, I think there's, because of the, how onerous this, with the distance requirement, people are just not, and also with the lot size requirement. I mean, that lot size requirement cuts out a ton of food.
Yeah, I think for the six bedrooms, I believe, it comes out to real close to one point four acres.
One point three seven five, one point three seven five be exact for if we allowed six bedrooms and the minimum is point seven five acres, so keep that in mind during this discussion. So even having one puts you at point seven five acres, because that's the starting point.
But, you know, Chris, I agree with you. I think we need to have a discussion down the road on short-term rentals. This is not this case here. Let me just say, when I first looked at this, my inclination was to think that with four rooms right now, there haven't been complaints for Kirby House, and I think Jeff's done a good job of managing it. And he's got plenty of room there, plenty of parking. I thought, well, you know, two more rooms, it's probably not going to have much of an impact on the neighbors or the town. That was my original thinking. And I got to admit, as time has gone on, I've kind of, that attitude has morphed, and, you know, we don't govern here in Madison by plebiscite or by referendum, but I got to tell you, we're elected to use our own best judgment and listen to our constituents, but not take votes necessarily. See, my glasses are fogging up. But as time has gone on, I've gotten more and more having difficulty with how six rooms in a strictly residential area is compatible with that primary use. I mean, I just, it bothers me the more I think about it. We're not in a commercial district, we're not in a transition district. This is a neighborhood residential district, and this, in this case, it happens to be in our historic district, and it just bothers me to think that that could move in next to me, not that I live in a house big enough to do that, but if I did, that could move in next to me and have six rooms and go from having a neighbor live next to me and a family to overnight be six rooms.
Yeah, and we're not talking about Mr. Royal, because he has run a great business and he's been a very valuable to the tourism industry and with his knowledge with the James Madison, and he has a good product, but there'll be people that would be able to take advantage of this immediately on North Main. You've got big houses with the acreage requirements and the bedrooms, and those neighbors around those houses will have, probably are not as aware of it as they would be, you know, with the Kirby House, and those properties would have a sign, just like the Kirby House, that we're opening the door, we've gotten used to their sign, but all of a sudden, we would have properties on North Main with the acreage requirements and that would have signage that we're not, we haven't been used to. And that is, we are in a residential, I mean, these are residential neighborhoods that would have commercial signage, and, you know, that's, that changes the flavor of it and...
And exactly how far apart would they have to be, though?
They have to be two thousand feet apart. So you look at, if you zoom out fifty thousand feet, you zoom out and you see where these properties can be, then you're totally, because the distance requirements are such and the acreage requirements are such, that you're, there's a good chance that the Pine Plum, East Washington, East Jefferson, all those areas might not be able to benefit from, for example, the house next to the Baptist Church, it's got the acreage requirements, it would fit, it would, I'm not, I don't need to pick on any house. So beyond cultural center, but, and meets all the requirements, then you start looking at these little cottages that may or may not want to rent one or two rooms that won't be able to do it.
Have we had anyone to come in?
So you've given them the advantage, the competitive advantage, is the people that have the bigger.
And not only is there the lot size requirement, there's also the building size of twenty, twenty-five hundred square feet.
Right, have we had anybody to come in to apply for a B and B? How long has it been since the last B and B was applied for in the historical district in the city?
I believe Mr. Royals was the last one.
And when was that?
To be applied. I think it was two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand fifteen, I think he said.
So we haven't had anybody to apply since two thousand and fifteen?
Not that I can recall off the top of my head.
But, you know, I understand Jeff's, Mr. Royal's frustration. He's got the rooms there, he has a nice product, and he's got to be frustrated not to be able to utilize them. I just can't get past the fact that when we have a primary residential use zoning, I don't understand how six rental rooms in the same structure fit under that primary residential use. It's, I just, I've...
Mr. Roy, when your guests come, how long do they normally stay? A week, two days, three days?
Two days.
Today?
One night, two nights.
Can I? So when, if you can remember, before COVID-19, when was the last time you had all four rooms filled at the same time?
Probably, probably nine or ten weekends a year, and that's really our bread and butter of our business. It's really when we have full houses and all full hotels in Madison. When everything is full, we're full. So it's not by any means do we have, you know, four rooms rented all the time, and we don't really like to have four rooms rented all the time. And as I said earlier, if we had six rooms, it wouldn't be that we would be trying to rent six rooms at the same time. We'd like to, for one, it's a burden to clean all four rooms at the same time and turn them over, so if we had six, we could rotate without having to clean everything every night.
Well, can they do that anyway? Does it, are the four rooms designated?
What now?
Can't you, could you do that any, could you not, do you have to designate the four rooms for, as part of the, you don't? Can't you just rotate the rooms?
No, well...
I mean, if you're saying all six are...
No, well, we see, we like to offer six options.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
It's been, the two options that we don't have yet are an accessible room where someone doesn't have to climb steps or wheelchair accessible, and a room that has two beds, because a lot of travelers like to sleep separately. And we don't want to change the offering we've got because it's working for us. And we'd like to add the two options that we haven't had. So on nights where we have travelers that want to stay in separate beds, we probably wouldn't rent one of the other rooms, and we let our travelers choose.
Yeah, so you could choose, yeah. So that doesn't preclude you from being able to have those options, it's just you couldn't rent the two other special night.
They just can't all six be rented at the same. Jeff, you gave a good point that I heard, and I think Monica identified trends. People from large communities are traveling to the smaller communities during this coronavirus. They want to travel together. And it may be sisters, and this is where I could see it would be very beneficial. I think that's a good use.
I agree.
And there's more than twenty-five hundred square feet in that house.
Oh, yeah.
How large is it, Jeff?
It's about seventy, seventy-six hundred square feet. It's almost eight thousand square feet. So, too much space.
If you had a, if you had a four bedroom with twenty-five hundred...
It meets all the...
Requirements.
Yeah, it does. I mean, so, I mean, that's why I'm not talking about Jeff's business per se. This, to me, is the unintended consequences because this is a text amendment, and this is going to open it up for every large house with lots of bedrooms and big acreage.
If I could just say...
Chris.
And we just have to be okay with that.
Chris, we get our downtown business people wanting us to get people to come in here and shop.
Ed, I'm just, this is, this is, this is my opinion. I mean, I'm not gonna, this is, I mean...
I'm not jumping on you.
I think that we all have opinions, but when we do a text amendment, it's not written in stone, that's why it's called a text amendment. I mean, it's not written in stone. We can change it again if we need to change it again.
Well, what he's saying is, if somebody doesn't do what they're supposed to do, we can not allow them to have their, that their licenses are up for every year, so...
I kind of comprehend.
Yeah.
No, we're not.
Yeah, Mayor, I believe that you asked how many people had written or notified...
Excuse me, excuse me, you've had your say, so we...
Okay, thanks. I thought there was a conversation.
No.
I'm gonna, is it time to vote?
Are there any more comments from the public?
I just, I want to clarify something, and I probably shouldn't turn the chat on, on the go-to meeting, but I'm going to say one thing, there was, there were people who supported Mr. Whitcomb's, and since we're in a limited environment, I want to read those out. It's just a couple. Annie Hunt Burris supported Mr. and Ms. Whitcomb's statement, and also Bonnie Lee Hull supports the statement. Carol Winslow asked that emails be read. The council never reads emails or comments that are written, whether they're letters or emails written about any action before the meeting. You never open, read those in open meetings. I don't think this is any different. Am I getting that wrong? I just wanted, the request was made to read emails, which would take quite a bit of time because, if I remember, there were lots of emails about this issue. So, but that's all of what was on the chat on the go-to...
I think, to some extent, I think, David, those are, maybe reading emails is for someone that has trouble getting on to go to meetings. I don't really know why.
No, they're on here now.
Oh, they are.
They would just like for the emails to be part of the written record, which never, never happens. I mean, you're free to write or email into the council to express your opinion, but if you want to come to the meeting, you can come and speak in person or speak through this, through this vehicle in front of us. I just wanted to clarify that. The request was made on here to have someone read the emails. Well, that's probably not what happened.
You know, in the majority of cases, we could probably do that. I think in this particular instance, the volume of comment has been really overwhelming. Every day, we're getting more and more emails, and there seems to be a real interest in it, and the vast majority, if not all, seem to be opposed to this application. But as I said, we don't really vote according to how many are for or against. We are elected to use our best judgment.
At this point, the public hearing is closed, and it's back to our council for final comments or a final vote.
Mr. Mayor, again, I'm going to make the motion that we deny this text amendment just based on the unintended consequences that this would open up, and I would like to relook at, I mean, I think I've told you this before, I think we need to really look at our B and B ordinance and tweak it. There's other things in there that prohibit other people and other, the distance requirements and some of the land requirements. I think we need to revisit the whole ordinance, and for that purpose, I would, I don't think the planning commission got it right. This is my opinion, and I'm going to move that we deny the text amendment to section eight hundred point three-three based on the application public hearing and discussion and considering applicable standards as presented or due to the following reasons, findings, and/or conclusions.
Which you stated as unintended consequences.
Unintended consequences to the whole, for the whole ordinance, yes. And how it's applied.
If they're second.
I second the motion.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Opposes? You know, we are in a situation, we invite business to town, and we hope that our business are successful. And my concern is there have not been any complaints from this bed and breakfast in the last five years. And I think we do need to work on our bed and breakfast ordinance, starting from this particular case. But in essence, I thought about it several times. We talk about traffic being there, we talk about a six-bedroom home. I thought, suppose they had six children, each one of those kids had an automobile. What's the difference, you know? So I'm on the vote to approve the text amendment.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, if you're going to approve, you need to vote against that motion, and if somebody needs to...
Against that motion, yeah.
A competing motion. Unless you just want it to die.
Mr. Mayor, I vote to approve the text amendment in section eight hundred, three thirty-one based on the application public hearing and discussions and considering applicable, I can't read it, standards and adopt to the following language. I can't read it.
That's real proper. Should have no more than six.
Thank you.
And I second that motion.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Opposes? My vote would be to approve the public hearing, text amendment. That ends that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, can we have a bathroom, please?
Sure, yeah, sure, sure.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, Mayor, I think Rick would have voted for it too, I think.
He will, but you know what? I think we made the right decision. We want business. There have not been any complaints about this bed and breakfast. The parking is on the bad side of the house, you know? I just think we made the right decision. We've probably got a lot of...
Oh, well.
That's right, but you know what? We have to do what... We have to do what's right. Just like they have a, just like they have a, a right to, they voted against it. We have a right. Ah, okay.
Well, your new, your first is great.
I forgot that I gave him fifty bucks two hundred years ago. Yeah, sorry. So, I forgot.
Thank you, Pierce, you're welcome.
You won.
I appreciate it.
I think that being that. I don't think there's as many people out there trying to apply for B and Bs. I believe the line. It's not, the reason that the residents of the city reduce this is because it's not like, it's something you can do for a living. Because they have to do it because of what it is. And that's why not a lot of people do it. There's not a lot of people that are going to get it. But, and, you know, I understand they wanted to look more at the B and B ordinance, but what they're talking about reducing the distance requirements on the hot side is only going to create more impact on the. If there's more B and Bs, you're making residents of the city more commercialized. So, I didn't quite get that. Thank you. I'm trying to think how to stay in the game. If there's not too many people who can take it out, I think there's a lot of flexibility to get more people, you know, or people with better opportunities.
We're going to call out me back to order. Thank you, Ken. Love's Travel Stop in Country Stores, Inc., DBA Love's Truck Stop, fifteen hundred Monticello Road, beer and wine package sales, registered agent Alan Roberts. Ashley.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'll just stay here.
Good, good.
Yes, sir. I have an application today for Love's Travel Stops. They, they are based out of state and so therefore I have Alan Roberts as the registered agent. He is a resident of the state of Georgia and over twenty-five years of age. And so, he is here today for approval. I have received everything I need from Love's Truck Stop. I think we've been working through this application process for about eight months. However, they sent me a fee for the full amount. However, we prorate alcohol licenses quarterly. So, I haven't received the correct amount yet, but everything else is checked off my list. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that before I ask for this application to be approved for Love's Truck Stop at fifteen hundred Monticello Road for beer and wine package sales with the registered agent as Alan Roberts, pending receipt of a check and the correct amount.
Is that pretty normal when you have a company that's based out of state to find an agent? I mean, that happens all the time, right?
Yes. I have a.
Okay, thank you.
And they both have met all the qualifications they need to meet.
They have, yes, sir.
Any more questions by Ashley? If not, have we approved alcohol license for Love Truck Stop and the Corrado? Just Love Truck Stop?
It is Love's Travel Stops and Country Stores, Inc., doing business as Love's Truck Stop for beer and wine package sales.
Can I get the motion?
So moved, I'm sorry, my mic is off.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Any more discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Poses none, vote unanimously. The Corrado LLC, DBA, Dosis Cafe, DBA?
Yes. Hold on, sorry, I'm trying to type in. Yes, sir. This evening, I actually have the owner of the business, Corrado. He is there, waving his hand at you guys. He has applied for a beer, wine and distilled consumption on premise license at two ninety Hancock Street to open a restaurant. Anyway, he has completed every single check mark on the application list and I would like to present his approval for tonight at two ninety Hancock Street for beer, wine, distilled spirits, consumption on premise to Corrado Corra.
Any more questions for Ashley? They met all the qualifications. We can get a motion to approve the beer and wine.
Second.
Are there any more discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Poses none, vote unanimously.
Could we ask?
You're opening, Corrado.
We're all so curious about that.
And you have to have carpaccio on your menu. We do, you do?
What is carpaccio?
Carpe, oh, my gosh.
Could we ask Mr. Karius to give us a little idea? We're also interested in that property. What do we got coming up?
We have a, basically, we do a little bit of a mess-up third and full Italian restaurant. It was around ten o'clock to five P M. And we're going to do three dinners during the week and some special events, maybe some wine dinners, some wine tasting.
Oh, wow.
Patio seating, perhaps? Are you going to have any seating on your patio in the front?
Outside, yeah.
And when do you, when do you hope to open?
Well, I'm targeting beginning of August, the first week of August. We need to find a few more, you know, playing them.
Get a state license.
Well, I think we're all glad you're here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Madison.
Thank you.
Run, Monica, run.
I just wanted to say that it's not often we have a business that comes in and checks down all the Ts and Is and make sure that everything's done well. And this is a business that has come in and he's been very questioning and making sure that he gets all his due diligence done in advance. And I just wanted to thank you personally for making sure that you're doing everything perfect. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with Ms. Callahan.
Ashley, again, Madison Chevron, Inc., DBA Lucky Food Mart, nineteen ninety Eaton Road, beer and wine packets.
Yes, sir. I have a new applicant to purchase the Madison Chevron at nineteen ninety Eaton Road. It will be called Lucky Food Mart. It is the one that connects with this and that breakfast. Mr. Punjabi has fulfilled a majority of my requirements. He, I spoke, or I emailed him last week and unfortunately, he's been under the weather and wasn't able to provide those documents to me before today. So, I still need from him bond insurance, which he has. He says he has it all. He just didn't bring it to me, so I can't say for sure if he did. And then, bond insurance. And then, I think he still needs to provide a fee. And I'm confident that he will get it done. But I understand if you prefer not to approve tonight and we could maybe add this to a called meeting or we can just prove it based on pending documents. And I will email you as soon as I receive everything and let you know that everything is in order.
I think, Mayor, haven't we done that in the past where we?
Yeah, we have. Go ahead and approve it. So, we get a motion to go ahead and approve that?
Yeah, I would have, I would move to accept the application for the beer and wine license for Lucky Food Mart, subject to the, providing the missing documents to our city clerk.
Second.
Are there any more discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Poses none, vote unanimously. Thank you. Public service apartments. Corridor Design Commission, Public Arts.
Would you like me to take that?
Please.
So, the, starting with the Corridor Design Commission, we've had two vacancies for a while. This is usually a, a January appointment, but we have not had anyone apply over the months. But now, we have Leslie Clark Jones. And I just want to give a little background on that. The Corridor Design Commission section of the zoning ordinance does not have any stipulations about residency. But up until a few years ago, we always had residents serve. And then, not too long ago, probably, that's probably been four years ago, but relatively not too long ago, Jamie Williams was appointed. She is not a city resident. However, she and her husband own Main Street Vet on the corridor. So, seemed like a good fit. Ms. Joan, Clark Jones was formerly on the Corridor Commission and then she was moved over to the Planning Commission. And unfortunately, the house that they were renting was sold and they had to seek another residence, which turned out to be outside of town. So, she's no longer on the Planning Commission, but would really like to serve. But she is not a resident and does not own a business on the corridor or work at a business on the corridor, which is not prohibited. But I wanted to point that out for part of your consideration. I did make this note to the Corridor Commission and they said, while they prefer to have a resident appointed, if there were no other applications, they certainly would like to have some bodies on that board. So, they have no opposition to you appointing another non-resident. But of course, that, this is all in your prerogative.
Is she the only, I'm excited for Ms. Jones. Is she the only applicant? Because I know there were some other people that were maybe applying for a corridor.
I've been chasing several people.
Yeah.
I've gotten some no's and I've gotten some no responses.
Gotcha, okay.
It's always good to have people that's willing to serve.
It is.
It's great.
So, there's still one opening?
There's, there will still be one more opening. And I will say, if you do decide to appoint Leslie, that would make two non-residents. If a third non-resident applies and is appointed, I think you, you don't want to go for a majority of people not living within the city on a board, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Get a motion to approve Leslie Clark Jones for Corridor Design Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Poses none, the votes unanimously, vote is carried. Public Arts Commission?
That is also a board that I am privileged to staff. You'll see that there are four seats open. Three have applied for reappointment. The reason we only have three instead of four is because Zeb Grant, who was formerly on the board, has moved over to the Preservation Commission. So, we didn't lose a volunteer, we just re-tasked him. So, in addition to the three seeking reappointment, you do have two applicants who are interested in serving. So, however, that shakes out in your.
Can we speak in favor of one or not? I mean.
That is a question for the mayor, not for me.
Mayor, is it okay if I advocate that Beverly Hobbs is a lifelong Madisonian? Well, she was born and raised here. Carrie and I went to high school with her. She went, she's, I mean, just sharp, she's the kind of person you want on a board and serving. And, and I, I reached out to her to see if she'd be willing to serve on this board. And she now runs, she went back to school later in life, got a degree and is now the head of activities at the nursing home and is one of my constituents. The other applicant just moved here and looks like an amazing applicant. I mean, her resume is very impressive. However, I do think it would be nice to have somebody that's, that's been here and understands the nuances of the community and wants to serve. And I, and I reached out to her and asked her to please put in her application, so. Anyway, yeah, I'm advocating for Ms. Hobbs if that's, if that's okay, so.
It's fine.
Ken, on the, on your kind of cover sheet, you've got Claire Wolf as seeking reappointment. I think, did she make a mistake on her app and put no on reappointment? She does serve on.
She does. That, that was a misprint.
All right. So, we're, we've got one opening and, or actually, we've got four openings, three, three reappointments and then one of the other two?
That's right. Well, there's nothing that says you have to reappoint someone.
Yeah, understood.
But if you're having trouble getting somebody on there, don't you think it'd be a good idea?
Go ahead and keep what you have. So, Leslie, you want to go ahead and vote for Beverly Hobbs? You want to give us a motion?
I, I would move that we vote for Ms. Hobbs for Public Arts Commission.
I would second that motion.
Are there any more discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Poses none, vote unanimously.
Mayor, could I ask you to see if Ken would be okay with contacting Ann? Is it Doty's, Dotus? If you could contact her, I guess, is this, is this the resident you mentioned that was new? There are other openings and other commissions she might be interested in. I hate to have somebody who's new and interested.
I mean, she, her resume is so impressive and I think that maybe we can get the cultural center to, or there's committee work. Don't forget, there's always committee work. You don't have to be on the board to serve on the committee. I think maybe if we, I can, I can, I know them, I'm happy to. They just moved here. And I would say that, and I'm sure there's going to be lots of committee work with this board, with this commission.
I hate to have new residents who are interested get discouraged because they.
No, and I don't think, hopefully, she, she wouldn't. But they just purchased the house on Vine Street behind, oh, what is it? Madison Oaks, yeah.
I just want to check with the clerk. So, what I've heard so far is that you have appointed one out of the.
Yeah, we have to appoint the rest of them.
So, we're going to go ahead and appoint Kim Brown, Chris Cook and Claire Wolf.
So, all the, all the people that have served, everybody's in agreement? We want to continue the.
Yes, sir.
We get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Poses none, vote unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. I've lost my agenda. Okay, I think, City of Madison, Indian Creek, Mr. Nunn?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city received bids on Indian Creek Water Reclamation Facility Copper Removal System. Our NPDES, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System or Service or one of those S words, requires, it has limits, and we are, we're not exceeding our copper limits. The, the, the equipment we have, the chemical injection equipment at the Indian Creek plant is, is on, is a trial basis. So, what this project would do would, would put the, the tanks, the pumps, the lines, the controls into place that would make that a permanent installation. We had a bit of a slip up in that the, the cost of this project was not included in the budget. That's the bad news. The good news is we have money to pay for it. We've been, we have a savings account that we plug money into every month out of the revenues that allows us to do this kind of cup, capital upgrade, so it'll require a budget amendment at some time. The, the document you have in front of you is from Carter and Sloop, who are the consultant engineers on the job. They've done a bang-up job on this. The bidding went really, really well, four bids. You see the results of that. All South Constructors was the low bid, and I understand that there's a good bit of contingency and some options in there, so we hope to get that base bid down when we actually build this. We have some options that we can, that we can work on. We have a, a great relationship with All South. They've done several jobs for us over the years. We enjoy working with them, so that's good. No reason to think, and I know Willow Construction has done work for us, and I talked to a couple of other bidders. So, we had four strong bidders. The bids were not out of line, they were not out in left field. But this document is just a recommendation that we, that the council awarded the project to All South Constructors in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight. If you accept this document and agree to do that, then the engineer will work up the, the appropriate contracts and contract documents to be signed and executed at a, at an upcoming meeting. So, this is the informal acceptance of the package. And then, you have all the documentation, the bid opening and the, and as much information as you'd like. There is also a notice of award in here that we'll execute. I'll answer any questions.
What is the source of the copper?
It's just in the, it's just in the wastewater stream. I'm not sure where all it comes from. I know, we test for copper, actually, we test for lead and copper. It comes from household piping. So, copper is in, is a constituent. It could be in some of the industrial waste stream, but when it, when it gets in to our plant, we have to have a way to precipitate it out and get it out of the, of the effluent, or in other words, out of the water that's going back to the stream.
Is, is the copper specific to Indian Creek, or do our other water sources have copper also?
The, the copper requirement or the copper restriction is specific to the permit at Indian Creek. We have a feeling that we'll be doing a similar type of job at South, the South Side, the other plant in our, in our system. So, that will probably come up in a subsequent permit process with EPD. It's not, it's not a constituent, it's not unique to that waste stream, no. Any other questions?
No more questions for Mr. Nunn. Can we get a motion to approve the contract with Rick McDuff?
It's just a project award to All South, and we'll bring the documents forward at a later date.
Sir, really, excuse me, Mayor, are we voting to proceed to the contract to vote on later? Is that right? Do you need a vote to do that?
There, there will, there will be a, a formal contract after the project is awarded. This just is the first step. In other words, you'll get another shot at this.
Okay.
But we do need a, do need formal action. We do need the council to...
We can get a formal action tonight from our council.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Indian Creek WRF Copper Removal Project, letter of recommendation.
That's perfect.
A second?
No more discussion. All in favor, show of hands?
But we were, just wondering, that also means it's awarded to All South, right?
It's, that's right. The low bidder, responsible bidder is All South Constructors, that's right. Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
That should be added into my motion, Ashley. Thank you.
All in favor, show of hands? Poses none, vote unanimously. Contract CARES Act contract for the municipal airport.
Did we miss the...
Yeah, you got RMA, Rick McDuff.
C, right?
G I S.
The GSI or G I S con, contract.
I don't think it has.
Yeah.
E, yeah. Contract Rick McDuff EPD, C, correct?
Yep, that's it. Okay, Mr. Mayor, this is a contract with Rick McDuff Associates to update and upgrade our mapping system for our utilities, water, wastewater, and natural gas. Bryce does a bang-up job with what we have. We've been building records over the years of our pipelines and infrastructure. This, this will take us, kick us up a notch. They're actually, we're actually, or they are, because we're paying them to do it, to go out and locate all of these structures, whether they're manholes, pipelines, valves, and, and that's very important when you're trying to locate a valve to try to shut off part of a system. We've been working on try to, trying to get this in better shape. This contract will finish that. We've done a, we did kind of a pilot project with Rick McDuff just to see how accurate our data was and our accurate, or the, and our mapping system. It turned out it, it wasn't anything that we can build off of, so we're kind of going, starting from scratch. We know where all our stuff is. We just got to lay it on base maps to be able to represent that for whatever purpose. For example, for example, if a developer or someone needs copies of where utilities are, then we can produce that. If our guys are out in the field and they're charged with locating utilities for another contractor to make sure they're not hit, then they'll have a better idea about where those utilities are. I mean, to get this in a better setup, in a better system where both in-office professional individuals, in, in-office staff, field staff can access this critical data just from a, a cellphone, smartphone, or a laptop or a tablet is going to be hugely important. The bottom line on this project is adding everything together, which they'll do it in, as one component is, at a time, is a hundred and twenty-three thousand six twenty-one fifty. We were, Bryce was able to get us a grant, Bryce, and I, I don't, I can't remember how much of that money we've spent, but the, the EPD or the water shed, what, that was EPD money? Right, okay. And it was twenty-five thousand?
A little higher.
Little higher, okay. Thirty, thirty thousand dollars, and we've expended some of that money, and that was a preliminary. Okay, so, we, we have a bit, we have a little bit of money to go on, but not a whole lot. We're going to spend in excess of a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on this project, but it's time to do it. It's time to get our house in order as far as this is concerned. And, and the staff went through a pretty exhaustive process to pick out Rick McDuff along with their survey and subcontractor to do this work. And I'm asking you to approve this project tonight. Again, it'll be split up based on the breakdown. In the letter, let's see, thirty-five thousand six sixty-two for natural gas, forty-eight thousand thirty-three for water, and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-six fifty for wastewater. I'll answer any questions.
No more, no more questions for David. We got a motion to approve this.
Sir, is it eight hundred and eight manholes in the city of Madison? Is that...
If that's what, that's what this says, that's what it is.
Wow. So, it's divided up into the, the three separate systems, and then that total is the one?
Yes.
Was it the one twenty-one, or is that what you said?
Yes, that's right. Their, 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 their total, and, and they'll break this down, they'll do one system at a time, and we'll tell them what to start on, because as you see, the gas system is a hundred and fifty days, water's a hundred and eighty days, and sewer's a hundred and eighty days. There may be some lap over, so we're going to be, we're going to be doing this for a while, but I'm, I am very confident that once it's done, then we will be able to maintain it and add to it, add accuracy. Bryce could, we could spend a good bit more time talking about the amount of data that can go into this. They can, you can actually attach photographs and other attributes to, say, you dig up a kind of a complicated area of a water, water system or the water valves and how that's all connected. And the field man says, well, I think somebody should know how this thing works and how it goes together. You can take a picture of it and attach it to that, and then somebody ten years later can click on that valve and he'll have a picture of how it works. That kind of information, that kind of, of knowledge is priceless when, when you can't see what's under the ground. So, we're, we're just going to get better about adding information to what we already have. This is just the, the basis, and this is going to build our system, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Can I ask if City Attorney Carter has had a chance to peruse these, this contract?
Yes, I have. We just kind of, I'm approving, I'm approving everything on here with you.
All right, thank you.
No more questions for David if not get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
No more discussion. All in favor, show of hands? Poses none, vote unanimously. CARES Act contract for the municipal airport.
All right, and finally, I get to, instead of spending a bunch of money, I get to bring you some money. The CARES Act is, this is federal money coming down to the Department of Transportation. This is thirty thousand dollars that is aimed at our airport, at the little old Madison Municipal Airport. Very important piece of our transportation infrastructure, I'd like to say. But you say, well, how does the feds and DOT decide to give Madison thirty thousand dollars? Well, the fact of the matter is, is that the big airports, the Atlantas and the, and the Miamis and, and Indianapolis's of the world during the coronavirus, they were, they were, they were underwater quickly. So, the federal government had to throw money at the big airports. So, when the feds throw money at the big guys, they say, well, we can't leave out the small guys as well. So, we get, they get millions and millions and millions, and we get thirty thousand, which for our size of operation is pretty good found money. Karen is, it's easy to take this, a little harder to, to, to administer it when you've got to document your expenses when you pay a two hundred dollar, you know, we, we can justify the money. I mean, we can do that. We can spend the money. But Karen's having to keep up with and document all the expenses. But this is a, a project. It is an agreement with GDOT for, and we're the sponsor, and it is for thirty thousand dollars. And I'll try to answer any questions.
Right.
What's that?
Kind of a, a table presentation.
For airport, that's right. But they, they recognize that most airports, some airports, a good many airports, don't have any employees. We don't, but we have expenses. We have real expenses. So, we're going to apply it to that and, and spend the money appropriately.
Have you identified any particular projects, the thirty grand?
This is, this is just for budgeted expenses. This is just for, you know, mowing and, and paying the light bill and insurance. What I can't remember, I apologize, Karen had to delineate a lot of that when she, when we applied for it, when we sent it in. But this will formalize it.
Federal question for David on the CARES Act.
The biggest disappointment I had in it was there's nothing in there for legal fees.
Well, you see on one of the exhibits, it's the, it's the landscape page, and I'm trying to, they, there's twenty-seven hundred dollars for utilities, twenty-one hundred dollars for ground repaired maintenance, twenty-one thousand for legal services. Oh, no, that's wrong. Aviation fuel. I, I read the wrong line. So, you see a breakdown, how we broke it down to add up to the thirty thousand. It's on, it's on after page eight.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, I'll miss it.
We got a motion to approve this CARES Act contract for the municipal airport.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, let's, go ahead. Can I hear something?
I said so moved.
Oh, have a second.
No more discussion. All in favor, show of hands? Poses none, vote unanimously.
Typically, if it's, if it's the money that, that comes down from the feds, then we will have more than earned it by the time we get done with it.
Yes.
Any unfinished business we need to discuss tonight? Not new business. The GMA mask face mask policy, we have a copy in our package tonight, and I would ask our council to approve this mask, asking all city employees, started, we'd like to be the mask for our city, asking all city employ, employees to wear their mask in city hall, going from office to office, conversating, make sure you have your mask on. This also includes council members that are coming in the city hall as well. And we'd also like to ask the public that's coming in the city hall that they would also wear a mask. And we would also encourage the public when they're going into the grocery stores, the department stores, to please wear their mask. I don't think we realize how serious this coronavirus is. If you talk to people who have had it, they will tell you that it's...
It's rough stuff.
It's rough stuff. It's rough stuff. So, I think we have to learn to protect each other, you know? And if we go into the grocery stores and the employees have their mask on, and we walk in and we don't have our mask on, what good is it so we're there to protect each other? So, I don't know if there's any way that we could mandate the stores to have the customers to put their mask on when they're coming to the grocery store, but we would like to encourage all our businesses in town to please make sure that their customers have masks on when they're coming to their business.
I know that we can't mandate since the governor has, has, you know, said that cities can't do anything stronger than the state, but is there anything we can do to incentivize businesses that, that require masks? Maybe instead of punish, incentivize, and I don't, I don't know if there's something we can do to have those signs up and say, you know, no shoes, no shirt, no mask, and David, is there, I mean, I'm just asking if you could put your thinking cap on to see if there's something we can incentivize businesses to do that would require people to, because if, even if we were able to do a citywide mandate, the mayor, if you did a mandate, there's so many people in the county that come in the city, it really need, it would really have to be a countywide deal. And again, we can't do anything stronger than what the governor says, but people call me, especially with the schools opening, and there's, the, the teachers, they're really, really concerned, and, and, you know, our hands are tied, but if there's something we can do to incentivize, I, I don't know what that looks like, David. I'm just asking you maybe to put your thinking cap on and see what we could do to maybe reward the businesses that, that, that take the lead on this. And, and they did it before. The business community was the one that, that came out strong by shutting down. And, you know, I think we've all gotten lax, and now we realize that that was not, that, that we shouldn't have, so.
Hey, you hate for the business to shut down, but if they could just sort of follow the guidelines and encourage that customers to wear a mask.
Well, I know, I know some of them, Carrie does and Whitby, I mean, there's a lot of businesses... of businesses that have been very proactive.
And, you know, to that point, if I could say we I believe we're up to eighty cases in Morgan County now. Out of these seven counties, including Morgan, and the six adjoining counties, we have the lowest rate of infection. And I would like to think that is possibly to some extent due to our taking some extreme measures before the state did here in in Madison. So I, you know, I'm not saying it's it was caused by our shutdown, but I think we played a role in in keeping those numbers down back when it was so important. I would support anything we have to encourage our our population to to wear masks. And I think this this GMA resolution, I think, makes sense. I was wondering about David. He works closely with our employees. I know in City Hall, we have employees that don't necessarily see the public. Are they going to be okay with this mask policy?
I I was discussed this earlier in the day. I think I was talking to the mayor. If if we require or if we strongly encourage masks coming into City Hall, the employees that meet them at the window will have on a mask. I mean, I know that within the office environment, if if we're in close quarters, if we're meeting or we can't practice the social distancing, then we will have on masks. But a hundred percent of the time in your office doing your work, that's not it's not reasonable nor necessary. But we'll and then I will reinforce the requirement that employees who enter any business in in if they are on, you know, if they're working, if they're if they have a city uniform on, then they will be masked up when they walk into as much as I can.
They could come up with ways to keep your glasses from fogging up.
I don't know what that is. So we're we're going to re we're going to.
I hold I end up holding my breath so I can see.
That is the worst the worst part. I want to get context. Did I see somewhere in here, Mayor, that we would supply masks to the members of the public that want to come into City Hall and the other?
I think we have.
I think it said that, didn't it?
This is a policy that we are allowed to do whatever the governor says.
Do we have the mask?
We have a statutory authority to control what happens on city property. This is a policy that the city is a model policy suggestion for cities that want to control and adopt this policy for people coming onto city property.
Yeah.
So that's that's where we have the authority under the code, and we don't have to worry about.
Does it apply to our parks? Or are we just limited to government buildings?
Well, we like. It's the title of it is, let me go back to it.
All city-owned property, I think it's.
I was on a different page.
It says City Hall and all the city property. I know.
I think it was.
City buildings.
To the very last resolve that the city will provide face coverings to individuals visiting city buildings who do not otherwise have a face covering that meets these requirements.
It doesn't apply to open open spaces on our buildings.
I think my question is, do we have those masks available now, David, to?
I know that I know that we have some, but I'm not sure if we have have them in sufficient numbers to offer anyone walking in.
Okay. So we should have them somewhere there. Good, thank you. Thank you. So we can get the word out through our city Facebook, I guess, encouraging the business to cooperate with the city, you know, if the council can give us the authority to sign this agreement from the GMA mall.
So moved.
Second.
No more discussion on the favor show hands. Poses none, vote unanimously. A town hall announcement, we know that all of our council members, I've been getting tons of emails concerning the stature concerning the stature here at Hill Park. We were supposed to have a town hall meeting with BD Barrett before coronavirus hit, and we have not rescheduled that meeting as of yet. And I would just ask the council, we just hold off on the public forum until this coronavirus quiets down. It may be three months, it may be four months, but whenever it quiets down, we'll talk about it again. But in the meantime, I would like to really appoint a committee to take a look at the stature and bring a recommendation and suggestion back to our council members if our council members would agree to do that while we're waiting on our next forum, which may be four months from now, five months from now. And we won't set a mandate because we don't know when this virus is going to end.
I think that's a very wise decision is to appoint a group of diverse. Diverse diverse citizens with different thoughts because, I mean, I think everybody has different opinions.
Yes.
And also, and we have to take in mind the law. And I know I've asked Mr. Jimmy to look at the law, and I think you sent something that said it can be relocated, but the the current version says nothing can touch it ever except unless you're moving a a road. And I don't I don't know that. And do you is that because I know it was re-upped in two thousand nineteen.
There are some provisions of the law that provisions to move the services and protecting that preserve it. The I think that's a lot of what. I'm sorry, I keep turning this off, so I don't get paid.
I will look at the I will look at the law in some of the cases that have come up under some of the recent material. But the basis for Decatur, DeKalb County moving some of that stuff is basically for relocating and preserving it. So, you know, they're not destroying it, they're just relocating. But I'll be glad to look that up.
Well, my understanding is they're being sued, all the all the so this might be that something you just might want to see what the the basis of the lawsuits are. And I know that DeKalb County belonged to DeKalb, but it was on Decatur. It was in Decatur, but it belonged to DeKalb, and separate groups of citizens sued to have it moved. So it wasn't a city or county initiated removal. It was a it was a different body. So, I mean, they're all I think they're all very, I think, coming or Henry County was a commission voted deal, but I think they haven't been able to move theirs because there's there's a lawsuit protecting the statute. So I think it I think we're going to have to watch to see, you know, what the law and how it is applied and and the and the true protection of the of the statute. But in the meantime, I I think no one is against a proper contextualization. And I think a group of group of citizens that the mayor deems to appoint along with working with the Public Arts Commission because the statute is under their purview, it's supposed to be. But I I think there's a lot of historians and 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 you can have a diverse body that tells what they perceive the story is and.
Aren't you aren't you getting into what we want to talk about, the public meeting, the various options?
Well, if he puts a committee before then, then that's that's what I think the instructions needs to be to them.
One thing I was thinking of, Chris, and maybe the other council members, I would like to get an opinion from the three commissions or city commissions that have, you know, the Public Arts Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and maybe the Cemetery Commission, to see whether they want to render an opinion. They may not want to. They may not think it's in their purview. But I I would like to see.
Don't leave out parks and green space.
Sorry, what?
Don't leave out parks and green space. It 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 resides in in something under their purview right now.
Mr. Mayor, I I I think forming a committee of diversity, people with different ideas, I I read my emails, everything's either one way or the other. And we have to figure out how to hear everybody's opinion. And we need a committee that will sit down and not come up with just my way or the highway. We got to have a committee that can interact and think about this and listen to the comments. And having our citizens do that, I think, is important.
I do, too.
And you're going to have to take your personal views completely out, and and let's look at the facts and look at what's really going on.
So so I guess when you are we giving him permit? Is that you want to go ahead and figure out who you want to do the committee and?
We'll get I get a couple council members with our city manager.
Okay.
We'll come up with a good slate. And we want a good diversity group to work on this, you know, someone who thinks independently, you know, and wants to do the right thing, you know? Not out of not out of hate, not out of prejudice, but let's want to do the right thing. Any more comments from our council? Any comments from the public? If not, this meeting, this is yours.
I'll be glad to write a memo on that.
So what now?
I'll be glad to write a memo on.
Okay, we appreciate that.